I want to say welcome to everybody. It's time for the meeting to start, plus five minutes. So with that said, I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll have the opening prayer when you do the prayer today. Stand if you will and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And my Father, thank you for this day. We're grateful for the rain. We are grateful for the beauty you've given our farmers and ranchers. They get some nice green grass and then hopefully it'll get us through the summer. We ask that you be with all our servicemen through these terrible times. And we ask that you be with this body today. Amen.
Yes.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. This is the executive session. No, that ain't it. This is not what I wanted to hear.
That's yesterday's.
First item, item number five on the special call meeting agenda will be an executive closed session authorized under section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code for deliberation regarding real property consultation with the county attorney and outside counsel regarding the potential purchase of the property located at 408 East Wall Street, Corn City, Texas, authored by Jeff Chapman. And with that said, we'll go into executive session. Let's go in my office, I think.
Judge, do you want to also read the next item? That's also an executive session, so then we don't have to come back out and read both. We'll deal with both issues at one time.
All three of them?
All three of them.
The last one is not a, is a special session.
Executive session is just here. Okay, item six is also an executive session item. It's executive slash code closed session as authorized by section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code for private consultation with attorney, consultation with county attorney and outside counsel regarding potential litigation and our settlement offer relating to contract with Blacktopper Technologies authored is Jeff Chapman also. And with that said, we will crowd into my office for the executive session. We've completed the executive session on items five and six. The next item for consideration is item seven. Discuss, approve, disapprove, revocation of authorization previously authorized actions by the county and approve the following contracts for possible alteration of contract terms. 2015 Corn Seal Code program, CR 199 reconstruction project and CR 211 reconstruction project authored by Jeff Chapman.
All right, thank you all. Let me tell you where we are on this and why we're here. These three contracts were bid and awarded to two different contractors. The Seal Code program is for Big Tex construction and the two County Road reconstruction projects are for Ferris, Inc. Construction Company. The contracts, it was raised in discussions with me last week between Herb and I trying to figure out what the status was of these contracts is that, is that I was never provided these contracts to review and it was Herb's understanding and kind of my understanding that the commissioners had previously asked the Road and Bridge Department to let me review the contracts before they get bid and awarded. So we're here, understand before we do anything that you've already approved the award of these contracts to these two contractors in open court, which is why the agenda item says possible consideration to revise and revoke the previous authorization granted. And I'm not up here advocating that my firm get more work from the county, nor am I up here advocating that you revoke these contracts if you don't want to. But I do want to make sure that the commissioners have the opportunity in open court to consider this and to clarify their desires and concerns with these three contracts or with other contracts like these going forward. So having said that, the contract documents that Naismith Engineering has used in putting together these contracts are general form contracts published by the EJCDC, which is Engineer's Joint Commission. It's an engineering group that puts out form contracts that are generally accepted in the industry and are generally good contracts. I have no problem using EJCDC documents and I've used them before for other owners and they work just fine. They provide a level of familiarity for both the engineers who run the projects, for the owner and for the contractors who do the work. The issue with these contracts is that they can be modified freely if you have a license to purchase and then modify them, which is not expensive. EJCDC sells these on a one-off basis for a hundred dollars or something like that. It's pretty inexpensive. You can modify them in ways that benefits the county and you can modify them in ways that protects the county, provides the county more authority for oversight and control of your project and also insulates the county for potential damages that it might suffer because of a contractor for issues like delay or consequential damages relating to performance. And furthermore, you can modify them in ways that help protect the county with respective insurance requirements and coverage in addition to just the standard language that's listed in here. Those modifications don't appear in these three contracts. And the question before the court today is for these three contracts, is there a perceived benefit for the county in trying to go back to these two contractors on these three projects and say, we would like you to consider modified terms for the general conditions for these contracts and get them to agree to that via change order or actually they haven't been signed by the county, so it would simply be a modification that they would then sign, the county would sign. But they would need to know about it because they bid a set of documents that would be different than what we'd be asking them to agree to in their performance. And that may result in, I don't know if it would, it may result in modified pricing from those two contractors. It's hard to say because you're talking about potential future risks, what the value of that would be and what the cost benefit analysis of that would be for the county. It really goes to whether the commissioners and Judge Long are comfortable signing these contracts and binding the county to these agreements now, given the fact that this consideration is before the court. And let me, let me just state for the folks in the audience here, this consideration kind of arose because of the issues with Blacktopper Technology, which is the subject of the executive session. That's privileged communication, but there's been a challenge to that contract by Blacktopper and part of it relates to the terms that are contained in these documents, which is why we're now here before the court talking about these three contracts. So having said that, that's a possible course of action. The other course of action would be to just simply sign the contracts as approved and move forward in the future with different course of conduct by the county. I did talk to David Underbrink yesterday morning about these three contracts. The contract for the Seal Code, Black, I mean, sorry, Big Tex would like to get started on that right away and the conditions are favorable to Big Tex doing that. It's likely that Big Tex would ask for some accommodation if they were asked to delay because of an attempt by us to modify the language of the contract. Ferris has indicated up to date that they've got about a two-week window before they're going to have the manpower and resources available to begin their work. And because of their schedule, we do have some time if we want to ask Ferris whether they'd be amenable to modifying the general conditions to some degree, to work with them before anybody, before Judge Long signs the contract with the county. That's kind of where we are in the scheduling. If you have any questions for me or for David, we're here to answer them. Obviously, if you choose to simply receive, these contracts have already been brought before the court and approved and Judge Long can sign them whenever it's convenient and we can get the work started. That's kind of the predicate. Any questions?
Okay. How much time, okay, you are familiar with these contracts?
I am.
Okay. And so you have some standard things that you would change about them?
Yes.
How much time would it take you to do that to these three contracts?
It would probably take no more than 10 hours of my time. And as far as my calendar, it would probably take me a couple of weeks to get it done just based on my other commitments in the next few weeks.
All right. How much risk, okay, you said the one job, I don't remember which one it said, they're ready to go, they're ready to go right now.
Seal Code.
How much risk do you feel like we'd be taking if we went ahead and approved that one to go ahead and held the opportunity for review?
Well, I haven't reviewed these contracts extensively. I don't know, I haven't seen the specifications of insurance that the contractors have provided. Given the type of work they're doing on the Seal Code program, I think the largest risk for the county on that is insurable risks. In other words, I don't see a significant amount of exposure to the county for issues like delay or consequential damages in a Seal Code program. There's not a lot that we could do to interfere with the contractor's ability to perform their work. It's usually going to be the weather or some other factor that's not a compensable delay or a compensable act by us to prevent them from work. Our concern would be whether, if they're working on our property, doing this program and the machinery they're using somehow causes property damage or personal injury to somebody or someone on the job, what exposure does the county have? And that really can be addressed by reviewing the insurance certificates, which I could do in less than an hour, as long as they're provided. And I can do that for all three of those. That's really the primary risk for that type of program. Reconstruction is a little bit different depending on our obligations, but it's similar. There's not a lot of coordination and direction the county's going to give these contractors in how they perform their work. The real risk goes to the specifications and the fact that as a county, depending on what the contract says, we may own the risk for the adequacy of the design and if there's road failure in the future, did the design we provided satisfy our needs and allow the contractor to do good work? And that's more of a long-term, really given the condition of the roads and the traffic down here, more of a near-term kind of problem. If it doesn't hold up to our expectations, would the risk, would that be on us or on the contractor? And those are the types of terms that
Just one piece of additional information.
Are hard to identify and that's the type of risk that's hard to determine because you don't know the extent of the potential risk as a quantifiable amount. You don't identify it qualitatively. So, you know, I think that going forward, it makes a lot of sense to deal with those types of contractual provisions as far as who owns the risk for the active design, who owns the risk for ensuring compliance with the specs and the contract's performance, who has the authority to do that, whether it be the county or the engineer or both. It's hard to put a dollar amount on those types of things until something blows up and you've got, you know, a road failure that costs, you know, tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars plus any fees that you incur in trying to get that fixed through another contractor. That's a difficult question. I would, I would think that the more easily identified question would be, are the immediate insurable risks covered? And that can be ascertained fairly simply.
All right, in other words, liability risk is one risk, specification risk is something else. So you have a warranty that you put in there to define the specification risk more precisely?
Yeah, so for example, right, so for example, under Texas law, unless it's specified in the contract, the contractor currently owns the warranty for the adequacy of the design. But if the contractor doesn't challenge the design, but there are questions later on as far as the quality of his work, the owner typically has obligations regarding acceptance, which waives contractors, which waives our claims against the contractor if something doesn't perform later. So working with these contracts to better define the obligation with respect to compliance with the claims specifications, better defining the terms of the warranty and the continuing obligations that a contractor might have, those are the types of changes that I make to these documents to give the county more control and more rights in the event that the work isn't performed in a way that we expect it or the result isn't what we expect. With respect to the insurable risks, with respect to property damage and personal injury if there's an accident, those are simply dealt with by making sure that the types of policies we require and the coverage and the continuation of those policies is controlled contractually so that the county has some rights if those insurance policies aren't maintained and provided.
I understand liability risk. Fairly well, the specification risks, in other words, what you're saying, would you be defining that between the engineer and the
It's defined between the contractor and the owner.
Contractor owner, so you're not talking about any engineer.
Well, the engineer, the risk with respect to the, to the design of the project is dealt within the contract between the county and Naismith. The risk in, with respect to compliance with the designs and the use of proper materials in testing and placement, that's between the contractor and the county and these contracts and the general conditions that are contained in these contracts deal with that. And these contracts do have provisions in them which talk about quality of performance and acceptance and things like that. They're not missing from these contracts. Don't get me wrong, they're in there, but there are terms that we can use as a county to put in language that's more favorable to the county in the event there's a question later on about whether something has failed or is in compliance with the design. And that goes to a minute, a number of terms in the contracts, but that's a risk, going back to your original question, it's hard to quantify in dollars until you have a failure.
So if, so if we would get a, okay, there, you said it's a standard engineering contract with them, but if yet, if we use that contract and always inserted your provisions, your, you know, your, your comments are to justify the, we'll take care of the county's needs and stuff, then that contract would, it would go pretty fast, didn't it? I mean
Well, once, once you do it, once you're done.
Yeah.
Unless you need to modify it in several years because there might be some changes in the law from the court or from the legislature. But the, what, what you would do if you made the modifications either now or for the next project is you would put those modifications with your contract documents that you put out to bid. So all the risks that you are shifting or accepting in those contracts are known to the contractors as it should be, in theory, built into the pricing structure. The problem with these contracts now, which is why we're here to talk about whether you want to do anything, is those, those modified risks and terms aren't built into the pricing structure for these contracts. So the contractor may come back and say, if you're putting in an LD clause or you're taking out an LD clause or you're putting in a wager of damages, that's more risk that I have to accept, so I'm going to modify my pricing accordingly, which would require some sort of action and reapproval later on of these contracts once that discussion, if it happens, would be done. If you don't do anything to these, but you do work on the documents for the future, then once you're done, you're done and then, and then your contracts are secure until something changes that we need to make a change to them.
So the Big Tex is ready to go basically on the time, is that correct, David?
Yes.
And Ferris, we would have a couple of weeks. You said we could probably negotiate or talk about these terms with them?
They told me their schedule was still a couple of weeks out. I don't know when they want the contract documents in order to start in two weeks. You know, they'd probably like to have them prior to that. So I don't know that you have a full two weeks to, to go negotiate and come up with something different in the way of contract and still keep them on that two-week schedule. Probably less time than that.
Well, I'd like to try to talk to Ferris and get, you know, I personally, I don't know, I just don't want to get something wrong. I just get the Big Tex thing going. But the Ferris, I'd like to be able to talk to them and see what we could do, do there. Commissioner and Judge, I mean, that's my opinion. But I, somehow we need to get where we used to use as, we get to a standardized contract where our, our interests are always covered. Same thing, I guess with the Dewitt County thing, only that contract we have for, you know, the thing with proposals for all the work and stuff, it's just an RFP now. If we hadn't, have y'all submitted a, a list of all the things we need? I mean, your material pricing, your, anything to do with maintenance of, of these roads, have y'all submitted that in, for the, into the information for the contract?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
We submitted the equipment.
But I mean, the, what, I mean, the, the different types of equipment?
Yes, yes, sir.
And, and you're, anything you need to do to do maintenance, who did you submit it to?
I thought it was to, I thought it was to the county attorney and he went to Jeff. Right now, I don't know where it's at.
You're talking about the Labor Equipment Council?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it has been pushed up the line, but I'm not sure about
Well, hey, we need, that'd be another discussion, I guess, for another day, so we need to get that set so we know. Because, you know, these contracts, there's, I don't know, but we're, we need to get this thing on, out of the, out of the gutter. And, and, and we got Jeff here, he's doing this stuff and we could probably minimize his time, no offense, Jeff, but if we had the right contract, so everybody's on the same page all the time. And either we put a Corns County on top of it or something or have it something where it's tagged that, that we know that it's going to be the contract to use and not a third-party contract. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but
I mean, that, that's totally doable. You have a contract that becomes the general
General contract for our county and we can expedite everything through it and be done. David, you got any comments?
Well, what is your timeframe on Ferris? Can you get this done? I know you're, indicated you're tied up.
Yeah, I could, I could call Ferris and introduce myself and ask them if they would be amenable to discussing some of the contract terms that the county has taken me and expressed some reluctance to sign the agreement as originally bid and kind of take their temperature on that. And I could do that when I leave here. As far as getting the work done and sending them a draft to review, I could probably get that done by, by Monday, on Monday's memorial, by Tuesday of next week and then give them some time to review and make any comments or offer any, any response with respect to the terms that are proposed or pricing. So that's kind of the timeframe. It's, it's, it really kind of starts with them and then part of it goes back to them and their review of whether they can quickly make changes in what their schedule is. If they tell us they're not responsive, then we don't need to take any action and we can sign the contract and they can do the work. If they tell us they're responsive, then once they tell us they're responsive, then we can work or I can work with them or their lawyer directly and as soon as we can get things sealed up, we come back to the commissioners with a modified contract and ask for your approval of that and then get Judge Long to sign it.
Well, let's take revoking the original approvals on those two contracts today in order to ex, to put that process in motion or what court action would be necessary?
I think you can probably leave the prior approval in place as long as Judge Long doesn't act on it to allow some initial discussion with Ferris to see if they're amenable. If they're not, then I can communicate with Judge Long and let him know that that discussion took place and he's still got the commissioner's blessing to sign the contract as is. If they are, then you could actually revoke the previous approval and grant new approval at next, you know, special or regular meeting when the work product between me and their, their lawyer or themselves, if they don't have a counsel, would be done. That's, that's one course of action. If you revoke the approval today and then I call them and they say, no, we're not going to do it, then you revoke your approval and you got to come back again, no matter what.
Got you.
So there, there's no need to do verification today?
There's no need to unless you, unless you feel as, as a court that you don't want to move forward under any circumstances.
Well, I think we want to get this stuff done as expedient as possible. Verification will be back to the stand. I don't think we're making progress by revoking it today. I think we just build some books, you know?
I, that's, I think I perfectly do.
Would, would the court have to take action to give you authority to do that?
No, I've already got a contract in place with the court that's been approved by the commissioners and it, it provides the commissioners the right to direct me to do anything under that authority.
But, but I mean, we don't have to pass anything today that says Jeff
No, I think your statements in open court today are sufficient for that.
About the Big Tex contract, if they are ready to start, would we be delaying them if you approach them?
I'd let them start.
You might be.
I'd let Big Tex start, get, get something going, you know, and it's Ferris to be the one I'm talking to. How are you going to know that you let them wind up? I mean, well, we have, what, what do you think they're going to start again? From what the engineer and I said
They've just discussed with me that they wanted to start moving materials in this week.
We need to have them sign the contract before they do that.
Yeah.
Right now, right, I've got the contract in front of me. If, if the commissioners don't move to change the terms of that contract and don't direct me to negotiate or simply talk to the Big Tex, then Judge, you can sign this contract when the meeting is done and get started. That's your business. I can't force you to do anything, but
Mrs. Hall?
When you're talking about revoking the contract, my, my question is, is when the original discussion came up here with County Road 211, the, the concept that you voted on was that the road's going to be $2.5 to $3 million and Mr. Underbrink asked for about $260,000 in order to implement that bid. The bid came in at $3.6 million and I never heard any type of adjustment to his fee. He also has a $150,000 fee that he was, you agreed to give him for the Seal Code bid of $1.6 million. That was under the premise that he was going to take care of the contracts and the bidding processes and he's supposed to oversee it all. And the fact that there's $260,000, I don't know if that fee will go up since the road ended up being not $3 million but $3.6 million? And I'm wondering what the ending fee is going to be with Mr. Underbrink considering he got $150,000 for the Seal Code bids, but indeed the contract is having to be reevaluated by the county. So what have we accomplished for the fee? I would think that maybe you would want to consider the, the fees being paid on the engineering here.
Comment?
I haven't asked for an adjustment to any of my contracts. I don't intend to.
But what are you getting for the $150,000?
Paying an awful lot of money. We're having to reach out and
We're having to redo the work.
We're finding that out, yes, we are well aware of that and we're trying to figure the best way to handle a bad situation, I guess is the best way I can state it. If it were left to me, I'm like Judge Long, I'd say, you know, let's get it right the first time instead of signing something that may not be completely correct, but I also understand the need for expediency on some of these things because of your window of time to do the operations, so.
If I may, from at least a contractual standpoint If I may, from, at least a contractual standpoint, in my work in this situation, all I deal with is the general conditions of the contract. Nationals handles the plans and, Nations handles the plans and specs, and in my experience, the majority of the fees that county pays their design professional goes to that. Not a significant amount of work, and David can correct me if I'm wrong, but not a significant amount of work goes into consideration of the contract terms, which is where I come in. Now, I haven't done anything on these, I haven't paid anything for that work, really, I don't think, on these projects. David has decided to use the JCC documents or his company has, and, like I said, they're perfectly fine documents, they could be better from owner's perspective, but there are many owners that never do that. There are many owners that pay the same that the county pays for design services, and they get the exact same type of contract. So, I don't know that the county has actually spent, lost, or wasted or whatever deterrent money for that, you know?
But our entire 2013, 2014 seal code bid was just wiped off the charts because of a faulty contract. So my question would be, is are we going to rebid out the 2013, 2014 seal code contract? Are we gonna make forward with doing that?
That was, the decisions about that particular contract we're discussing in session, the county is going to attempt to, and we're gonna keep that contract in force. Our strategic discussion on how to do that remains privileged, but at this point, the county's not taking action to terminate or discard that contract. So we are, at this point, we're gonna try to get them to do that work for the price agreed.
Does he just wipe the money out of the line, I don't mind if he's blacklining?
Judge, what, if you ain't gonna sign it, that's all kind of moot point, what's your opinion?
Well...
It all comes down to you, sir.
I'm going to look at what we end up with, and I haven't looked at what we've talked about today, and I'm gonna use Jeff to assist me, and if it's something that doesn't do what I perceive the commissioners' court to have authorized, I'm not gonna say. You know, I may not have the same perception that everybody does, but I'm open to discussion anytime with any of the court members and with any of the public members. I've not had very much conversation with the general public, they don't come by and converse with me. I don't, I don't agree with everybody, I don't agree with everybody on the court. But I was elected to say as everybody else was, I'm entitled to the opinion that I have, and I'm gonna prefer with Jeff all the time. And I'm not gonna tell you ahead of time, now I'm gonna vote, 'cause I probably don't know at this point. Whether that suits you or not, though, I'm sorry.
Fine with me, I mean, I'm just trying to figure where we're going this morning, but I agree.
I don't know that we're gonna go anywhere.
Anywhere, that's what I'm saying.
Consider what we discussed and talked about, and I'm gonna consider it with Jeff primarily, and with the commissioners' court.
Timeliness is important, but haste is not good.
That's correct. You know, I agree with y'all, but I still think the Big Tex thing, we've spent money, you know, we've, you've heard Ms. Hall and Mr. Yoder and a lot of other people say that, you know, we're, we go out there and fix these roads, and boom, we don't do a damn thing to them, and then they know we're losing them, we've had bad weather. Right now, Big Tex is the one that's, according to Mr. Underbrink, within days of moving in and starting a project, which, in a way, will, you know, I think that one, that one contract could save a lot of, a lot of extra money if we just go ahead and get it done, get, you know, initiate that thing and get started, because we're just, we're just burning daylight. You know, we're gonna sit here and, 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 I mean, that one is ready to go. Now, the Ferris, I understand, we could sit there and do what we need to do there, but the one on the Big Tex, I think we need already to get started and get something going now. I mean, that's just my personal opinion.
Can you simplify the exposure? I mean, can you give us an example of the exposure that we would have by not adjusting the contract, that we're, we're gonna let them go ahead under the contract, and then we're gonna modify one contract? Well, what's the exposure? I mean, what's our exposure that you're, that we're wanting to modify in the second contract?
Well, like I said, it's, I can't probably accurately identify a quantitative amount of money that our exposure is, because it's hard to foresee the cost of potential problems moving forward. But the, the changes that I would make to the contract are such that it puts a higher burden, or a higher level of responsibility on the contractor for strictly conforming with the plan and specifications to achieve the desired result of the work. What it says now, in the contract, generally speaking, is that the contractor agrees to do the work as defined by the plan and specs for X amount of dollars. And we have an obligation to pay for it when it's done. That's the general nature of the agreement. There are terms in the contracts, and it's about a 40 or 50-page set of general conditions that deal with procedures for acceptance of work, deal with the level of scrutiny required or authorized by the county to make sure the work is done in strict accordance with those plans and specs. And what I tend to do is place a higher level of responsibility on the contractor for performance with the plans and specs, and I remove language which can be interpreted as acceptance by the county of anything other than absolute compliance. And there, and those terms right now, as unmodified, contain a certain level of ambiguity and a certain level of gray area, and I try to make it more black and white, so that when work, for example, if, if the seal code doesn't adhere, the contractor's gonna say, well, the amount of the motion specified wasn't appropriate, I did exactly what was specified. And we're gonna say, no, you had a performance obligation in the specs to make it work in accordance with the performance required by the design intent. The excess material that would have been required is therefore on the contractor. Right now, that's the gray area. If, if we change the language in a way that it puts more risk on the contractor, it protects the county, but I can't quantify what that is, 'cause I don't know the level of degree that it's at.
Well, you can't determine that the company's gonna sign it, they might not even be Big Tex, and the other company might not even sign that contract.
And that's why I say that if you do your, if you do this work for future contracts, when you put them out to bid, those terms are published, and the contractors can freely choose to bid it or not.
That's right. The price might go up, or they might not sign the contract.
Right, and if we go to them now and say, I wanna make these changes, they can refuse, in which case, we have an unsigned contract, it's not a force of law. Or they can say, we'll do it, but you have to pay X more dollars, which the commissioners' court would then be asked in a separate meeting to consider whether they wanna do that, or revert to the original language in the original agreement. What we're trying to do now is simply, because the issue came up, we have, I felt like, I have an obligation, and the commissioners have an obligation, to have this discussion in open conferences, that they all can consider and decide whether the course of action that has already occurred is acceptable, or whether more action would be required. And that's kind of the point of the conversation, but those are the types of things that we would be protecting against. It's hard to say whether that's worth $100,000 or $3,000, so you just don't know.
Or what anybody else could do with anybody?
Absolutely, and that depends on, a lot on rare condition factors and types of materials and the way they do it. Part of, part of the thing that we would deal with in the contracts is making sure that while the contractor has the right to control their means and methods, we have the right to accept the work. And those are terms that can be, can be strengthened in these documents. Like I said, I don't know, it's really up to the commissioners whether you wanna spend the money to do that now, or whether you wanna take the risk of having these contracts cost more or not be, not be signed. Right now, the contracts are signed, but they're signed based on what was bid. So if we change that, we've gotta give back and get them a chance to modify it.
All right, I wanna say that if we go ahead with County Road 199, Big Tex agreement?
No, Big Tex is seal code.
Excuse me?
Big Tex is seal code, 199 and 211 are Ferris.
Okay, so... We're talking about, okay, we're talking about 199 is the, the one that will be Ferris art, and that one's ready to go, and they're ready to start this weekend, is that right?
That's what they've told me.
Yeah, Big Tex.
So we'll go ahead with that one with Ferris, the 199. And if we don't go ahead with it, they could refuse, and it could, could cost $100,000 more if we had to rebid it.
Well, if we had to rebid it, the contractors that were awarded, that may not be interested in doing it again, they were already at the best price, so I don't know what the range was, I haven't seen the bid results, so I don't know what the range of pricing was, but typically speaking, if you rebid it, you're not gonna get a better deal, because right now, pricing hasn't improved from when these were bid. But, but at this point, until you have a refusal to perform, you don't need a revision.
David, Big Tex is ready to go, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, Ferris, on one of them, that was one...
Ferris told us that, that they were scheduling, both these contracts have been working with us to put the documents together. We've been expediting documents back and forth. We've given Big Tex no reason to believe they couldn't get started on their own schedule. Same thing with Ferris. We've done the same thing with them, getting their documents together. We haven't given them any reason to think they can't do it on their own schedule. They've told us that they probably won't be ready for a couple more weeks, they've got some other...
Oh, Ferris did?
Ferris.
That's right.
But Big Tex is already finishing a project, and they're, they're working toward, they're planning toward starting next week, which means they wanna try and get materials ordered. They need a contract in order to start that. And there's a risk going forward with signing the contract, like he's talked about, and there's a risk waiting and not signing the contract. There's risks both ways.
You have looked at the done program?
I just briefly looked at it at the moment while I was standing here. But no, I haven't looked at them extensively at all. I did, I did give them right now to make sure that the insurance, certificate of insurance and the bonding was there, and it is, and the, generally speaking, that, that program is in line with what I would ask for from a coverage limit and a coverage-based amounts. I haven't looked at the, at the endorsements to see what's on there, but generally speaking, the framework is adequate. And given, given the uncertainty of the contractors' reactions to these three contracts, and the fact that you've already taken action and budgeted and approved these, unless there's a high level of concern amongst the court, what I would probably recommend is keeping these contracts intact and going forward with them. If you want me to ask Ferris what their temperature is, I can do that, and if they're willing to look at modifications, I will give them modifications and see if that changes anything with them. But I would recommend, if the commissioners feel like going forward, they wanna have a modified form contract to use for future work, we can get that done without jeopardizing these contracts and these amounts of money. I don't think these are bad contracts. I think they can be better. I don't think you're accepting a, 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 a level of risk here that would be unpalatable. There's always risk in everything in construction, but I don't think that these are contracts which are overly favorable to the contractor or the engineer at the sake of, at the sake of the county. I think they're generally okay. And so if you were to go forward with these, I have no problem helping you if anything arises and dealing with them.
Everybody obviously knows I haven't signed them yet.
They know that.
I'm not going to, until you go through and do whatever you can do to make them as good a contractor as we can have for Corinth County. Now, I'm, I'm sorry if anybody disagrees, but they disagree all they want to, but I will not sign them until, until we do that.
Okay.
And I think any of the future contracts after this, you know, wouldn't even be considered unless all the proper language is in it.
Okay.
It's just, but everybody all knows it.
All right, at that, at this point, are y'all ready for a motion, so I can have more discussion?
Do whatever you feel you need to do.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve all these contracts. Understand that we may get a two-and-oh vote, we may get a two abstentions, I don't know what we're gonna get, but we may get a two-and-two vote. But anyway, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve these contracts and give Jeff authority to consult with the judge and go back to these companies, if advised, to ask for revisions. Is that a complete motion? Any time, please?
Sounds okay.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? No, second that much. Any discussion? I frankly am gonna vote against it. I don't think it's the motion that we need at this point. I want Jeff to look at everything, but I don't want him to look at it with an approval before he look at it. That's why I look at one. It's the way I feel, man, and I practiced law 50 years ago, and I don't think I ever did it exactly that way, but that doesn't mean I knew what I was doing. I think for the county's benefit that you need to negotiate this far, and we don't need preapproval or any other kind of approval, so I'm gonna vote against it. Any other comments, or?
I'm for it.
It's your, it's your motion?
I'm with the judge.
I'm for it, too. So we're two-and-two, and don't have a... That doesn't, that doesn't pass the motion, or whatever. We'll, I might schedule another meeting, we have to, to see if we can...
Do you need any further motion from the court? Do you need to do anything?
No, I mean, the...
You have authority to act once, correct?
I, I have been given direction, which I will, which I'll move on when this meeting ends. At this point, the court is taking no action on this agenda item, which means that the previous actions remain in place unless modified by future action by the court. And I can take the direction I've been given, and I can report back, and if we need to have a, another meeting or a presentation at, at the next regular meeting, we can do that, unless the judge is satisfied with the contracts as they are, and he chooses to sign them, because that approval was given previously.
I'd like for you to make sure that the judge is happy with what he's signing. I mean, I, I understand the need for expediency and all that, but as I said, sometimes we've, we've been hasty in the past, and it may cost us in this instance, and maybe being cautious now may cost us also, but at least he will have an opportunity to fully understand and everything, that, all of the items that he's concerned about.
With reference to Big Tex, okay, if we don't understand where holes now till Judge or y'all look at, but if Big Tex, if it goes over the time they wanna move in, I mean, say, like, they decide to move in next week, Monday, or wherever, and then we've yet don't have a contract, so they're at a stand, they can't do nothing till, and if they decide to go find another job or something, we...
Well, if we don't have a signed contract with them, we can't enforce anything against them.
But I'm talking about against us.
They, they can't really enforce anything against us, 'cause we've signed a contract.
That's all I need to know.
So, you know, they, they've submitted a bid that we've approved, they've got a contract which we've got in place, but until it's signed, there's no agreement. And, and it's pretty clear in the bid language and the law that until you have a signed written agreement, they can't come after us for damages, and, and for that matter, the county has immunity for those types of claims anyway. So, you're safe with them if they choose to order materials instead of their own risk. If they go somewhere else, and they, and we didn't sign the contract, they've gotta allow for and accommodate their overextension.
Can I make sure that I understand this correctly? We're, we're not going to fulfill two contracts because a company, laptopers... We're, we're not going to fulfill two contracts because the company Blacktopper defaulted on the first contract because the road had fallen into disrepair? And so now we're looking at the two contracts that, that the, that the guys are ready to go, the contractors are ready to go, but we're using the first default to make a decision on the, the two other contractors that are ready to go? Is that what we're doing here?
I don't know that, that I can answer that question. I don't think that that's exactly what's happening. Blacktopper has raised issues with their performance obligations. In the course of those discussions, commissioners and I discussed the terms of the contracts in Blacktopper's contract, which is identical to these.
Right, so it's all the same contract.
And we've, and we've identified provisions which could be worded differently, which give us more rights with respect to the contractors. And so the potential problems posed by Blacktopper have raised a level of concern of the commissioners that they have now asked to review and address. I don't think there's been any action by the court today which, which invalidates these bids or the awards. It's simply a matter of the judges and the commissioner's direction to me to make sure that the judge is satisfied that the county's best interest of being served given where we are.
But I'm under the impression the reason the default was due to the condition of the deterioration of the road.
But Blacktopper has made a number of allegations with respect to why they don't want to perform, and that is one of the allegations.
And these two other contracts, the deterioration of the road is not an issue?
No, that's not an issue at all, as far as I know.
Because they're ready to go.
They're ready to go. The only issue with these contracts is...
If we wait on these two, it's possible that the deterioration of the road could come into play if they're not willing to give a shit. They could just deteriorate.
I believe, I believe anything is possible. I don't know that we're gonna be dealing with a level of delay with these contracts to allow for the discussions that are being required today. I don't know that that level of delay will, will reach, and I seriously doubt it will reach the months of delay that have occurred between the time that Blacktopper bid was submitted and the contract was ready to begin performs. And we're talking about a seven-month delay in that situation. It was bid in October, we're now in the middle of May.
Right.
These contracts were bid and signed, and signed by the parties last month, which was the county.
Right.
And, and I don't know that the timeframe will ever reach seven months. If we get to a point where we can't convince Judge Long that these documents need to be signed, then the county will pull the bid and rebid them.
Right. And theoretically, nobody, and Mr. Underbring can probably answer this, but no company I would assign is gonna take the contract that's gonna allow a road to sit there for seven months and deteriorate and then say, "Okay, well, we're responsible for it. We'll go ahead and fix the road up and, and fulfill the contract."
Well, it, I mean, part of that, part of that relates to the contract language, which goes back to the underlying problem, which is the county doesn't have the best language in these contracts to make a contract to do that.
You can't get somebody to sign it. The language is only as good as the person who can get it signed.
Blacktopper did sign it, and the judge did sign it. And the problem we're having with Blacktopper is that if the language were better in that contract, or we could go back to Blacktopper and say, "You have an obligation. You accepted the risk. You signed the contract. You need to perform."
Right. Theoretically, you have to get it signed. I mean, I mean, I can make a pretty damn contract, but I can't always get everybody to sign it.
But, but it's not a theoretical question with Blacktopper, they did in fact sign it.
Right.
So, if these people have signed it...
Right. But they might not have signed a stronger contract.
Well, but they wouldn't have bid on it.
They might not have signed your contract.
They wouldn't have bid on it. They have, they have the choice not to bid on it.
Right.
If the county changes the language in the contracts going forward in a way that it disincentivizes contractors from bidding on their jobs, we'll know that very quickly. I can tell you from my experience, and I've represented a lot of owners and I've put the exact same changes or similar changes into their contracts, we're still getting competitive bids. We're still getting projects, and when those projects go south, whether it's a dispute, we've got better language to rely on. And so my job, as I've said to you in discussions personally and to the court in open court, my job is to represent the county and make sure the county gets the best benefit out of these contracts. And I wouldn't put terms in the contracts if I've had experience in other jobs that I know cause a level of extension that either put the county in a worse position or put the county in a position where they get, they don't get any bids. It's possible to write a contract that waives all the contractors' rights, and it's possible the contract will still provide you bids, but the price may be exorbitant. I don't do that. That, I have to weigh the interests of the county when I do, do this work, and that's what I'm trying to do, so.
And in relationship to the deterioration of the roads, and I'm hoping I'm not giving anything that's a way that is, should not be spoken, but I believe it's the court's belief that the roads are not that bad, that this is just a little sand being thrown into the air for them to justify what they want to do, that, that the road conditions are not that bad. They came up with a laundry list of why they couldn't, and that was just one of the many. And it's, you know, I think it's commonly believed that that was just, you know, grasp at a straw, take as many straws as we can, maybe we make a broom.
That's a good example, yeah. Can you... To answer your question, Scott?
It does.
I, my decision on these contracts had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, it, it does. I just, I'm concerned to stop progress and, you know, I mean, I'm all for rewriting the contract for the next deal. I'm all about learning from our mistakes and, you know, if they think they're on the right track, but I just don't know if we're gonna gain anything by not continuing on with the two roads.
That's, that's my...
I think Jeff and the judge will do this expeditiously and it will probably not delay anything.
I assure you that we will do it expeditionally, expeditiously. Whether it will harm something, who knows? I would not do this personally if I were building my own road and didn't have it the way that I thought was the best way. I would not do it, and that's the way I feel about what we're doing on County Road. If it's not proper to do that particular way, we need to do it the right way. And this county's gone down the road pretty far of not doing things the right way, and we need to do the best we can from here on, and I think that's what this court should do and is gonna continue to do, we'll see.
I move we adjourn.
I second it. Any, any discussion? All in favor of adjourned? Get up, please.